So I want to just ask you, what is the special in this?
Okay, let me explain. Just as our institute has a specialty in gifting us attempts, as truly said by C A Sunil Talati sir. The specialty of these special sessions is that we will be provided by incredibly valuable insights by some of the most renowned industrial leaders.
Oh, is it?
Yes, man. Let me give you a concrete proof about that. We already have a very well-known leader, C A Rakesh Agarwal with us already. And do you know what? He already has an experience as a manager in P W C. Uh, one among the big four C A firms and as well as he is also the right hand of our Motabhai. I hope you know he is our Motabhai, man.
Yeah, everyone knows the Motabhai. It's one and only Mister Mukesh Ammari. And we reflect it as a C A Mukesh Ammari.
Yes, the one and only C A Mukesh Ammari. Why C A? The charisma and the attitude he holds. So you guessed it right. Let's give a huge round of applause for the speaker of our first special session, C A Rakesh Agarwal. Now, I'd request uh, the Joint Secretary of Vikasa, Ahmedabad, Harakarat Singh Hooda, C A Bhishan Shah sir, the M C M of I C I, Ahmedabad, and the speaker of our session, C A Rakesh Agarwal to be on dais.
Swara, Swara.
And now I'd request C A Bhishan Shah sir and Harakarat Singh Hooda to present memento to C A Rakesh Agarwal sir.
Memento. Good morning. Wishing you all a very good morning. Now, most of us at this stage of our life thinks, what next after C A? Even when we are joining article ship, we think what kind of experience we want? Somebody thinks audit, somebody thinks tax, somebody thinks management consulting, somebody thinks due diligence, somebody thinks financial advisory, so on and so forth. The question is, can you all hear me? Thank you. So the question is, do we know what we don't know? The larger question is, do we know what we don't know? Take for example, my example. Thirty years back when we started the practice, people used to talk about only audit and tax. But when you see these days, any chartered accountant in senior positions, you'll find that either they are doing E S G or they are doing corporate structuring or they are doing strategy or they are doing investor relations. Few are CEOs of startup companies, few have opened up startups their own. So the professions which are there today in senior positions did not existed fifteen, twenty years back. The question is, now when you are becoming C A this year, next year, what next beyond basics? One of the subject these days, how many of you all have heard the word green? Raise your hands. Green. What's the extended word of green? E S G. E stands for environment. S stands for social. G stands for governance. Governance means board. Governance means government organization. Governance means Prime Minister office. E S G. What's the added version of E S G? Sustainability. So can you all repeat the word sustainability? I want you all to memorize that word, sustainability. Sustainability includes E S G. It means whatever we are doing today is relevant for tomorrow and for generations to come. Sustainability for a common person, the common definition is, we conduct ourselves in a manner, we conduct in ourselves in a manner that we don't consume resources today, the resources which belong to the next generation. In other words, whenever we are doing business, we conduct in a business that the business is also sustainable forever, not only for ten, fifteen, twenty years. That's the basics of sustainability. So anything to do with E S G and sustainability put together is nothing but sustainable business model, sustainable businesses institution and a non-compromising growth future, growth-oriented future. It is from this background, I'll set the broad context. And in setting that context, I'll cover A, timeless learnings from various leaders. I will cover, in this timeless learning, what are the mega trends that we generally see in times to come? That is from here to now, later. While doing and understanding the mega trend, there are certain do's and don'ts. In that scenario, what are the emerging strategies? So I'll cover four levels of strategies. Strategy one point zero, strategy two point zero, strategy three point zero. And finally, what you see today is strategy four point zero. I'll cover in brief very quickly. Having done that, in this background, then I'll cover the concept of sustainability and then finally close with what chartered accountants can do in sustainability. I repeat, the theme of the session is, starting with basics, what the global leaders says today, then going to the current emerging disruptive technologies and disruptions that we see, then looking at the strategical aspects, that is strategy one point zero to four point zero. And in this broad context, where does the reporting belongs to the future? That is non-financial reporting, where we report because whatever get measured, get performed. So that's where the role of chartered accountant at minimum lies in non-financial reporting. I repeat, I would like you all to repeat the same statement. Whatever get measured, get performed. Can you all repeat? Whatever get measured, get performed. So today, the focus is financial reporting. Tomorrow will be non-financial reporting and that's E S G. And what chartered accountants can do in E S G is something I will close it, eight, ten points which all of us can do as a chartered accountant although there is no upper limit. Okay? This is a very slow session by design, by intention. The idea is to transition the basics of these concepts into your D N A. That's the attempt that we'll make. This course material is in editable form. You all can take it and put your name and present it by yourself to the extent that you understand or you think that you can make others understand. It's not my property, now onwards it's your property. Now let's look at, as a traditional all-time chartered accountant, which function you all can relate? At best, the rightmost aspect that is reporting. And reporting generally people associate with financial statements. No, not so. It can be corporate governance reports, so governance. It can be management discussion analysis, so investor relations reporting. It can be with long-term investors, so E S G reporting, say Canadian pension funds, P F funds. So effective reporting itself is a bigger subject, more than the financial statements and audits. Before that, a bigger role is functional excellence, be it manufacturing excellence, supply chain excellence, marketing excellence, so on and so forth. Before that, is whatever we decide to execute in terms of setting up of the project or creating a new business. And once we do that, we keep on reinventing ourselves. So we say we reinvent and above all, it's vision. So starting from vision, linking to reporting is a feedback loop. Can you all repeat the word? It's a feedback loop. So whatever get measured, get performed and whatever get performed, get measured and it comes back to vision. So you think something, then execute it. Once you execute it, you go on the path of operational excellence. Once you go on the path of operational excellence, it's get measured, it's get reported, both financial and non-financial numbers. And on those numbers, then there are new targets and new, and that entire feedback loop starts. So a chartered accountant can merely report or audit or it can get into the feedback loop from vision statement. In other words, get into the board and then think what to be executed and continuously reinvent. So he rises from an accountant to a managing director. So the focus is making our thinking, broadening our from financial statement to non-financial reporting, that is E S G, and then getting into the sustainability part and then reinventing that sustainable model forever is something that I would like you all to aim for. So it's not chief accountant, finance controller or CFO, think like managing director. This is the example of a complete reporting. Starting from vision to strategy to operational parameters to numbers. So I will just move the cursor. Here you will see the strategy, performance, the complete cycle. Here it is the name of the business. It can be Petrochemicals Digital, which covers all the five elements of feedback group in reporting. Then adding that the concept of E S G frameworks, there are ten, fifteen frameworks in E S G. The local framework is B R S R, which is more towards very entry level. Global level you have I R C, T C F D, G R I and lot more. Now it's emerging T N F D, G A G protocols. So all these frameworks are represented on the left-hand sides in a systematic, simple way, including what is there as an input, what is there as an output and finally, what is there as an outcome. And globally, you would have heard the word Paris Agreement. When you heard the word green, you generally hear Paris Agreement or two degrees scenario or twenty fifty or net zero. So this aspect is known as S D G goals. Can you all repeat the word with me? S D G goals. So there are seventeen goals and those, how these goals are matched to a particular corporate. Even this work is done by a chartered accountant. This work that you see is done by a chartered accountant and he's standing before you. So, you all can think only financial reporting or audit or tax or you can think the complete thing cycle and present it back. And in other words, you are forming part of the feedback loop. This understanding of feedback loop is the purpose of this session. Can I re-emphasize? Understanding of the entire feedback loop and the frameworks that you will see is something that I would like you all to carry away so that when you are thinking for next ten, fifteen years, you think from this aspect, right from vision to performance management to execution to reporting and reporting to again, refining your revision time and again. Now let's look at the real tough things. I'll start with basics. Basics is anywhere you invest time, say ten thousand hours, you can have functional excellence. Then you invest many, many years to become a professional leader in that field. And it can be many, many hours, five, ten times. And then once you become functional leader, the field is taken away. Field does not exist. Then you rely on your general management. You can reorient yourself couple of years. Say at least two thousand five hundred hours on a new subject which did not existed. And the subjects that existed today are today, which did not existed in twenty years back are A I. You have E S G. I took a break, invested two thousand five hundred hours in Boston campus at both Harvard and M I T, covering nine subjects on E S G. And I am back in front of you all. Today, with knowledge and experience grown over time, knowledge of frameworks and performance and the contemporary learning puts it as cutting edge. But I took this break after twenty-five years of my C A. You all will be taking ten years, within ten years. Why? Because the world is changing faster. From the people who have changed a lot, who are ten times, hundred times better than me, I've learned from them. And what are those learnings? I'm passing all to you all, not mine, but from them. And those are, first Mister Dhirubai Ammari. He always says, think big, think the extraordinary power of an ordinary person. Whatever he does, he does things at scale which impact billions of people. Be it wearing clothes, biggest textile conglomerate or be it petrol, now energy or be it digital. He thinks that. The next person I met, Miss Swati Paramal. Do you know what's her background? She is a scientist. John Hopkins, doctor then scientist. However, she became president of Industry Association Fiki. And the rule is, once you go into a new subject, you read fifteen hundred pages on ten different aspects of the subject and meet twenty people who are experts in that field. What's her rule to get into new subject? Read fifteen hundred pages on ten different aspects of the same subject and meet twenty people who knows much better than you on that subject. That's so. And that's the way she transitioned from a scientist to an industry chairperson. That's her Guru Mantra. Third, my very close friend, Mister Pablo. Mister Pablo is a world champion in swimming. However, he was an ordinary student serving newsreaper at doors and then he became the director at Santander Bank and then later B C G. He continues to hold equivalent to Uber, that is Clickkart. Apart from his twenty other startup, Clickcar is one of his own startup. His rule is, improve yourself one percent every day. And that I would like to explain. If you improve only one percent every day in year, how much percentage you would have increased? Any wild guesses? If you improve yourself only one percent a day, say you are doing ten squats or you're reading ten pages. Every day you increase one percent, either productivity or efficient or volume. Then what will happen? At the year end, it will become how much? Let's calculate together. In sixty days, it becomes double. So ten becomes twenty. So ten squats become twenty squats or ten pages become twenty pages. Sixtieth day compounding. Hundred and twentieth day, how much it becomes? Four forty. Hundred and eightieth day, how much it becomes? Come on, you all say now. Eighty. Then two hundred and fortieth day, how much it becomes? Hundred and sixty. Then three hundred day, how much it becomes? Three hundred and twenty. That's the power of compounding. So in a year, it becomes fifty times. So if you are starting with ten squats, it becomes five hundred squats. If you are starting with only ten pages of reading, it becomes five hundred pages within a year. Provided you stick to a discipline of increasing one, one percent a day. How much? One percent a day and that's achievable. That's the way he became swimming champion across the world, apart from his busy career. And the third is, fourth is the learning from eagle, that is painful sabbatical. You know how legal eagle reinvents herself? The total life is eighty years. At the age of forty, it's not able to fly high. And even if it tries to hunt, it does not have a buke which can hunt. So it goes deep into the mountain. It cannot see with eye focus. So first it breaks its eye, then its buke and then tear off its wings and then remain there for months. After that, it has a new eyelid, new wings, new buke. Now she is again back to hunt. And she does, she is the practically the king of all birds for the remaining thirty, forty years. That's the power of sabbatical and you all be needing sabbatical in times to come to reinvent yourself. Because whatever is the knowledge and career of today, itself is going to reinvent itself tomorrow. So in other words, just to catch up, you have to do more. And to be ahead in the curve, you have to do lot more and that's will come through sabbatical. That's the power of sabbatical. So how to do that? This part will cover it towards a bit end, more towards as a part of Q and A. Now coming to the context setting. Immediately after C A, what you are passing through. So let me settle the debate. In one experience, myself, Chintan and lot, there will be a lot of senior chartered accountants who have experience. When we joined C A, before that calculator did not existed. So people who are doing totaling job and telling the trial balance, they thought their job is going to be disrupted. Then calculator came, that computer came. But the number of chartered accountants have multiplied. So if somebody says because of A I, auditors will not be required. So tell them about our experience. That much I'll say and stop there. But you have to reinvent yourself. So what are the things that are changing? It is not A I or audits and other kind of stuff. Those are incidental thing. There are four categories of mega trend. What we say, whatever is changing, what we say mega trend. Can you repeat the word with me? Mega trends. Can you all repeat aloud please? Mega trends. There are four categories of mega trends. And for each one, repeat with me. First is physical. Physical examples of physical are autonomous vehicle, three D printing. For example, China can print entire house in twenty days. You can print weapon, gun, giving a command at third places. You can print lot many things. You can print artificial limbs. There are lot of things you can print. And the power of new material. The example that I'll give you of power of new material is example graphene. And I would like you all to Google it. Graphene is a material which is two hundred times stronger than steel. So if the weight of a car is thousand K G to carry a passenger load of six hundred K G, you can have that car in lab laboratory just with five K G of graphene. In other words, it will save diesel, it will save lot more. This is a hypothetical scenario. What I'm trying to say, there are, the way we have seen physical disruption, physical disruption is yet to come and it's coming. Nano material. The second disruption that we see is digital, which includes internet of things and not internet, blockchain and its application, the entire banking industry and the platform like Amazon and other thing. And now we are emerging local platforms, microservices platform. Biologically, we see disruption. I'll take two examples. You can print an organ, easy organ and replace the parts. You can also print plant-based protein which tastes like non-vetch. The rate of disruption is very high. That is synthetic biology and genetic engineering. Lot more to come. And above all, trend of all trends, societal trends, which includes E S G. So now if you can see the power that we are talking of this new field, E S G, is as good as physical disruption, digital disruption or biological disruption. It is this aspect, we will try to quickly touch upon from a distance and then non-financial framework, what are the frameworks which are available? That will quickly touch upon which becomes your new career apart from financial reporting. And then why you will belong or why you will do better than other who are non-chartered accountants? That reasons I am sharing with you so that you all carry that as a key message as a student. So this will be a light session from that perspective. So first, no easy things. Every, the easiest way to make people happy is to make them feel big, feel good, feel easy. Let's talk tough. If somebody does ninety minutes of exercises and there is a weight loss or a better shape, they think they are doing good. But when it comes to resilience, it's a fourteen hours of training per day, maybe in Himalayas or Black Belt or Commandos. Careers are made like that. Let's not talk about one or two hour a day. Let's talk about hundred hours a week of intensive efforts. What is that hundred hours of week of intensive effort? How do you differentiate between what is meant for masses and what is meant for classes? Here is an example. You go to a website, Coursera, they'll say ki, I will teach you everything about A I. I will teach you everything about E S G. I'll teach you everything about A B C. Give me, and it's a nine months course. How much? Three days to two hours each. Nine months. So it lingers nine months, I am doing something. Think from a perspective who is Commando or a person who is writing C A final exams. He will say fourteen hours a day and I'll increase the speed of video from one to one point five X because it's meant for graduates. So I'll increase the speed by one and a half X. So I'll start Friday night, work six Friday, Saturday, Sunday, sixteen hours a day and by Monday, I would have completed the entire course. It's not nine months. So you have to come out your own thinking, Coursera or real online. So let me tell you, you can do a course on A I, data analytics, neurosciences, doctorate in psychology, masters in E S G from Harvard, sitting from India. You have to clear twelve papers. Twelve papers each will cost some three thousand dollars. You clear two papers, your market value increases. So that gets recovered. But each paper maybe say four to five hundred hours or three hundred hours to begin with because the subject is new. And that's the intensity you need to do with respect to your sabbatical and other curriculum learnings. Choice is yours. Flattery, noise, noise versus reality. There are lot of things that happens and we call it hype cycle. Can you all repeat the word? Hype cycle. Hype cycle is whenever there is new technology, new impact, new societal theme, people think that it will happen just even in a year, then it all collapses. And after that, over a period of time, you see a stage of plateau and systematic growth. So whatever you are hearing in terms of your practice, be it digitization of loan, that is auto loan, digitization of insurance, digitization of your audit practice, automatic filing of return, that's going to come after collapse of hype cycle. And that's the thing that generally happens in all the cycle. With this background, that is mega trends, hype cycle and other things like tipping points. Let's look at the four evolution of strategy which will connect back to the integrated business model for integrated reporting. First and foremost is there in your syllabus, which is Michael Porter, five forces. So I'll not cover that, I'll move on. The next business model which has happened in recent past, that is fifteen years back, is six D's of disruption. That is disruption comes from E business to M business to U business. E stands for E business. M stands for mobile computing and U stands for ubiquitous computing business. And the difference is, E business is real online. That is you can go to institute website and buy something or pay the, pay something, you can order something. M business is while you are moving, you find a discount coupon in relation to that locality where you are moving. So it's mobile business. And ubiquitous is when the large network of business are there, it determines where there is spare capacity, where there is excess capacity and the price. And ubiquitous is when the large network of business are there, it determines where there is spare capacity, where there is excess capacity and the prices accordingly. Like FedEx movement of cargo worldwide. So three levels of strategy two point zero and you all repeat me with together. E business, M business, U business. Can you all send me? E business, M business, U business. E everybody knows M is mobile business and U is ubiquitous computing. Then comes strategy three point zero. And here I would like you all to use the word flywheel. Can you all repeat the word? Flywheel. Flywheel is what? I will explain in very simple language. Ten people come together. And say that I will open up a business with hundred products. So hundred products, they list it on website. And that hundred products, they just use word of mouth to tell two thousand people visit this website. So there are how many? Hundred products, thousand people. Later on, this thousand people who comes on website. Out of that two hundred people says though, oh no, I want to join and project my work own product. So instead of hundred people having the product, there are ten thousand people putting the products. And maybe one lakh users coming on website. So to match that, you need a technological loop. So shifting from word of mouth to technological loop is churning the flywheel. Then once you put a technological loop over and above, you put A I. U X and U I. That is A I, user experience and user interface. And once you focus on that and things start happening that it's that user brings. Producers, producers bring users, users bring producers, producers bring users and that goes on and on. And it becomes a whirlpool and that is known as flywheel. That's happening with E business model and the word is winner takes its all. So in flywheel strategy, the word is, the outcome is winners take it all. Can you all repeat with me? Winners take it all. That is strategy three point zero and four point zero. And here is the live example. Person only keeping books, that is Amazon, went into N number of business and this is a classic example of flywheel. With this background. Can we now say that whatever business we are looking? In the eyes of four things. Physical disruption, digital disruption, biological disruption and E S G disruption. These are the forces of disruption and strategy one point zero to four point zero we have seen. So you look at any company in India, B S E thirty. The question to you. Are these companies undergoing deep shifts? Are these company going under deep transformation? Yes or no? My answer is yes. For each of the companies. I have written certain keywords which links back to the four categories of disruption. So that becomes your measurement related K P I. To track on matter that matters. So what we are looking at is reporting. But the mindset as a chartered accountant, we need to change. For understanding those kind of reporting, we have to change our thinking from a hierarchical organization. To an autonomy based organization, from controls to leveraged assets, so on and so forth. Similarly, when we look at the earlier practice, the focus was on cost and profit. Now it is innovation and growth. When we look at leadership, it was authoritative. Now it is more visionary. In other words, the K P I of measurements will change. You will not say the cost was X and it is reduced so and so. The revenue was why it has increased so and so. You will give different numbers. The customer acquisition has increased, the market share has increased, so on and so forth. With this background. The question arises. What are the matters of non financial reporting? Now I would like you all. To give me only five free name of frameworks which are non financial reporting. I'll start with the financial reporting. The financial reporting is in the S. Or Indian gap. So that's one framework. You are future chartered accountants, give me five frameworks which all of you do five years to ten years down the line. Only five. I'll start with the easiest. The easiest one is B R S R. Can you all repeat with me? B R S R. That is in stage two, that is compliance. Once you go to a mature stage because corporates will mature, what are the other frameworks? Use the word G R I. What are the other frameworks? I I R C. That is integrated reporting. Can you all repeat the word? Integrated reporting. Then there is a quantitative frameworks which is known as G R I, global reporting initiative. Can you all repeat it? G R I. What is the global language of sustainability? The common factor, the way for currency it is U S dollars, the global language for sustainability is S D G goals. Can you all repeat with me? S D G goals. The Indian version is Niti Ayog, which is aligned to S T G goals in many respect. There are traceability standards. Do you know which is the biggest standard or exposure draft issued by I F R S board this time? In the S came from I F R S. Now I F R S has issued sixty seven standards, new standards as part of S two. What are those standards? Sustainability. So I F R S has issued S one and S two. What they have issued, can you all repeat? S one, S two. S one is general purpose standards on sustainability and S two is sixty seven sub standards on sustainability. Which is issued by I F R S board as we speak today. Today it is done at I F R S board, tomorrow it will be mandatory in a year's time in say Europe. And two to three years down the line, it will be over here which everybody will be practicing and that's non financial reporting. Then you have natural capital protocol. Everybody here carbon footprint. So I'll say an easy word and you all can research it. It is known as G A G protocol, greenhouse gas emission protocol. Can you all repeat the word? Greenhouse gas emission protocol. Then when it comes to what is sustainability, clean air, clean water, clean soil. So every company which is emitting, they disclose certain numbers. Clean air, clean water, clean soil, worked in a manner. That the people who do not have voice are not exploited and we do not consume the resources. Which are more than what the world produces so that the next generation gets the resources which they are entitled to get. From that perspective, if I had to look at the main thing which is happening is two degree scenario. And that is known as T F C D. That is task force on climate related financial disclosure which deals with two degree scenario. Then there is life cycle assessment, so on and so forth. But for you, top five key tookaways. If I, I would like you all to remember, research and think of a career. Additional to your base to base reporting and non financial reporting, first I I R C. Second, G R I. Third, S D G goal. Fourth, S one, S two of I F R S board and fifth G A G protocol. These are the five things that at minimum, most of the young chartered accountants must aspire to know in the field of E S G. Having done so, which are the department that you are going to measure? That's the fundamental question. First. You disclose a self balancing business model. Do you understand? Stock reconciliation is opening stock plus purchases less sale is equal to closing stock. What is the self balancing management commentary? It is. Market scenario, within that what is the value chain? Within the value chain, what is the strategic differentiator? Can you all repeat three things? Market scenario, within that what is the value chain? Within value chain, what is my differentiation? If my differentiation is working, differentiation either is working well or not well. So you'll disclose operating analysis. If operating analysis is better than the peers, then it means your strategy is working. And if your strategy is working, you will not acquire a dump guy, you will grow organically. So you'll write a commentary on capex and growth plan and organic growth. And if it is not doing well, you'd think of acquiring something or restructuring yourself. So what is your self balancing business model commentary? Start with operating facts, that is scenario, environment. Within that, what is the value chain of myself and competitor? Against that, what is my differentiation? And if my differentiation is working well, I will grow organically. If I'm not, if it is not working well, I'll show signs of either acquisition or restructuring. So that's self balancing business commentary is something that you all report as a first case. Then you have a manufacturing team which talks about environment, that is emissions. Then you have learning and development team which will talk about the talent pipeline, including diversity, numbers which will show as non financial numbers. Then you have NGO that is social return on investment, read investment as contribution or donations. Then you have H R team, you have a legal team that is which will give you sustainable license to operate. You have research and development team which will research the future of the product for you to be relevant for tomorrow. And for that there will be K P I which will be there as a non financial number, reporting as part of your G I R I report, reported as sustainability report. So is the case of customer, thought leaders and lot more. Now. We have understood very basic elements of non financial reporting which itself is five times, ten times bigger career than financial reporting. The question is. That can be done by M B A, that can be done by doctors, that can be done by fashion designer. Because in that field, you don't need license to operate. So the question is, what differentiates you to be ahead of competition? I have listed down. Ten areas which typically differentiates a chartered accountant in E S G practice of reporting non financial numbers. Compared to non chartered accountants and these are. First. You have a systematic access to board of directors, including independent directors, be it audit committee or E S committee. Which others may not have. Second. Because financial numbers is your responsibility, you say you have the power of the institute that even the non financial numbers you are supposed to look at, it is not inconsistent. They do not have power to look at it. Third. The concept of integrated report is already prescribed by C V. And voluntarily or involuntary, it comes into the hands of corporate secretarial and chartered accountants. And corporate secretarial generally do not get into numbers, so it gets into the hands of chartered accountants. Fourth. Management discussion and analysis is a commentary which has lots of aspects when it comes to financial discussion, that is financial instruments. The entire management commentary is similar. When it comes to volumetrics or production in capex, it gels with financial numbers. So management discussion analysis, anyway you are looking at it, you don't have to ask for information, you have to build on that. Then risk management is generally done by chartered accountant this day and most of the reporting to risk management board is by chartered accountants. Then monitoring of K P I is something that we have to enter. Control and assurance, including budgetary control is something that we are well versed of. So if certain more elements are added for non financial reporting for control, we can differentiate ourselves. We know how to capture non financial values, we can do holistic benchmarking and above all, we can consistently raise the bar of excellence. So what you will do from today? Now the question, having understood all that, what you can do from today? Today means today. That you go to office and if there is a relevant client, although E S G is continuously involving, what you can contribute today? Those are learnings for tomorrow, but today. First. Integrated report, you can start preparing from today. Second, it's mandated by C D. Second. You can be part of new team which is being set up for making E S G reporting or sustainability task force or sustainability vision force. And in that process, you can be part of larger governance model, be it matrix organization structure. Be it cascading from operating model to K P I and then monitoring it or be it digitization of that project. But at least you are part of it to begin with. How can you engage in conversation where it's add value? With investors, we all know green funds give money at a lower interest rate. That is something when you are approaching or your C A is approaching to the fund houses and you can show it green. Then a portion of it can be at a lower interest rates. And when it comes to the investments from Canadian funds, they give higher multiples. Supplier screening, we are selling our products, we are buying our products. So supplier screening we can do whether it meets E S G standards or not because their reports are on website. Customers, we have an advantage. If we get ourselves accredited on E S G. Then persons especially in Europe who buys only from E S G compliant sellers, then perhaps that. Additional competitive edge, we can contribute by making our organization to some extent ahead in the E S G journey from today. C S R R O I report and value added statement and most of the companies are preparing today. As a firm. We generally think that audit firm collaborates with tax and audit and taxes there, they collaborate with G S T. When they are together, then they collaborate with banking. Now there is an opportunity to collaborate with E S G practice holders from other fields. We take their client on non E S G matters and they take their client or E S G matters. That's the healthy collaboration that can be started. And above all, policy advocacy. Now it is the first hundred days of government when it comes to policy advocacy, there are a lot of great submissions. Can be made for state, for company, for sector and this government versus the world. So these are the contemporary opportunities of today. Now I would like to mention. The basic part which I left it for last. And here it is. It's the combination of formal training. Combination of power of context and the combination of power of habits and. Of course, the power of sabbatical. With this background. With this background, I would now open the floor for questions. Any questions from Vikasa? Students? Fellow professionals? Sure, sure. Thank you all very much. A big thank you.
Thank you so much sir for your such insights to the students. So I'd like to request now C A Bhishansha sir to give the comments on the session sir, please sir.
I know that you all are waiting for the next session as well of the G S T. But we, I can say that you all are C A and C A means courageous achievers. You all are achievers in the sense that you are sitting in this hall, you are attending this conference on yantramanas. That is driven by A I. Ignited by innovation. You all are innovative minds and we need to think on our value. That is what you are spending your time, economic values will be there. But since you are giving your personal time here, I request all to be attentive, to be interactive. And take all the benefit of this conference in this session sir. These E S G and sustainability is the new area to work upon. You may have not done any work in your office, in your article shape. But yes, the future is of E S G and sustainability. Do some homework and try to explore and I can say explored so far as this E S G and sustainability is concerned. Thank you very much sir. Thank you, Harkeet, please.
I, Harkeet Singh, on behalf of all I C I and Vikasa team, extend a heartfelt gratitude to all the present. I, Harkeet Singh, on behalf of all I C I N Vikasa team, extend a heartfelt gratitude to all the presenters of the dais. And the respected session speaker, C A Rakesh Agarwal sir. And thank you so much sir for such insightful presentations on E S G and sparing a devoting your precious time for us. Thank you so much sir, so request Bhishan sir and sir for a group photo.